Thank you very much, Larry. Folks should know we are recording and we will put out the recording if need be. If you know, folks, if folks want it, and I think several people will. Jenna, you said you had some announcements you wanted to make?
Yeah, I'm putting them in the chat. Just wanted to invite everyone to sign up for FCC PTA emails. So that link is there. Also, please follow us on Facebook. That's our most active channel. We do have Twitter and Instagram. I just put the Facebook link in, so you can certainly engage with us there, but I need to do a better job of getting some content there. And lastly, if you're not connected to a local school, wanted to invite you to still join the PTA for our strength in numbers and our advocacy efforts. We also have a special education PTA, so that is countywide SEPTA. I'll put that link in the chat as well. If you wanted to join SEPTA, that would be tremendous. It's quite affordable. I believe it's $15. So thank you very much. I'll be monitoring the chat. You can message me privately, or you can put questions in the chat. But we will probably take questions at the end. Thank you.
Excellent. Friends, to introduce myself, I am Robert Rigby, brand new Vice President of Advocacy for the FCC. PTA. My background is that I've been an educator for 39 years, just retired from FCPS after my 30 years as a teacher student with disabilities and then a Latin teacher. So you'll see the fallout of my teaching class or doing presentations on ancient Greek and Latin. Because this is my first presentation for the PTA, so be patient with me. That said, I'm just going to launch into what we've got. As I told Jenna, I, like any good teacher, I overplan. So I think we may need to carry some of this over into a school board one, two, two. Okay. There's the Fairfax County Council PTA logo, one child, one voice, our website. Part one, we're going to talk about the school board roles and the structures and the members. And there's a very nice picture of them all sitting at the dais. Okay, I started right at the basics, the clause in the Constitution of Virginia that says there are school boards and a very limited number of their powers. Article eight, which is on education, section seven. And then I went to powers and duties of the school board in the Virginia Code, which is the laws passed by the General Assembly. In the code, the laws, education is titled 22.1, and the school boards are chapter seven. Now, there's about 15 tabs in there. We're not going to go over them all. But in a very broad set, just sit on the right. The school board sets policy and the superintendent and their staff set regulations for implementation. So theoretically, their work is at a 10,000 point, 10,000 foot level. And the folks under them are the ones that write the regulations and implement them. It's actually a technical important point. A policy is something passed by the school board. A regulation is something developed by the superintendent. In other counties, they call them other thing. But the school board is the corporate body. It's ultimately and legally responsible for all policies and regulations written in and read, express and implied. That doesn't mean you go to them for every small thing, but it does mean that they're the ones who are ultimate land. So here's a blank slide on what the school board does and does not do. And here it is on my paper. First thing the school board does is pass policy in the votes on those Thursday nights at the dance. Another thing they do is to help develop policy. And those are called work sessions. They're televised during the day. You can go in person, but not happen. They approve some of the regulations automatically. The most important one being the S R N R behavior. They can step in and intervene and change of the regulations. I've only seen it once in my 22 years. They set goals. They spend a lot of time on the strategic plan, talking about what the broad goals they made specific for the division are. And of course, they manage our resources, which means setting the budget. You know, setting the schedule for repairing and building buildings and all of that. They don't go around hiring. They really don't have an impact on firing and personal matters unless it gets appealed to them. They hire exactly five people. The superintendent, the clerk of the board, the deputy clerk, and the division council, who is our lawyer. All the rest of us work for those people up through the chain. If there is a personal matter, of course, the ultimate court of appeal is the school board, but generally they get it. Some other things they don't do, they're not supposed to, you know, step in to say conflict between children or direct conflict between a child or a parent and an admin or a teacher, the day-to-day running of the school sort of thing. It's frowned upon for them to step into that. I'll make my part right. Advocacy starts with a teacher, moves to the principal, then to the central administration staff, and then to the school board for a policy change. Then to the school board for policy change. That doesn't mean don't contact your school board member because they can certainly help and tell you who to go to. Okay, too much of a speech for an empty slot. Who is currently on? Here's my beautiful map of the nine magisterial districts in Fairfax County, plus the city of Fairfax. People in the city of Fairfax, their kids go to our schools, but they do not go to our school board members. We have Drainsville, Hunter Mill, Sully, Springfield, Braddock, Mason, Lee has been changed to Franconia and Mountburn. So one school board member is elected from each of those districts. Then three are elected at large. So when you go to vote, you vote for four people. Your district and then the three at large. So you vote on four 12ths, on a third of the school board members there. Okay, how to find out who your representative is? That map is lovely, but it's really hard to use. There's a website that the county government develops to help you find everybody, and you type in your address. And it's got to be a Fairfax County address. And from top down, it'll tell you who your federal officers are, your state officers, your delegates, and at the bottom will be the at-large school board members and your own school board member. You can click on website, under the word website, under each of their pictures, and it will send you to a little place where you can put in a question to send it in. They do read this, so it's not a bad thing to do. Okay, when is the school board live? I call it off-off years. It's the year when there are no federal or statewide offices on the ballots. Only local and only state senator and state delegates, so no governor, no congressman, no president. It's the lowest turnout of all the four-year cycle in Virginia. The terms are four years. So the current board started on January 1st, 2020, and will continue to serve until the last day of December next year. The election for all 12 is next November. Also on that ballot are all the supervisors, several local officers, and your state delegates and your senators. That's next year. Okay, now here, who's on the current board? The three rats, the at-large rats, who represent the entire county and are voted on by the entire county are Karen Keys-Gamara, Abraar Omech, and Ratsna Sizemore Heizer. Those are the emails that I cut and pasted from the employee email system, so they should work. I put in a plug that Ratsna Sizemore Heizer is our current chairman because the state says we have to use the word chairman. The student representative elected by Students Countywide is Michelle Togdi. I've met her, but don't know her very well, and I don't recall right offhand which school she's from. But she's starting this year and will end next year. And she has a voice. She didn't have a vote, but she has a voice, so it can't hurt to reach out to her. Now, in each of the districts, Ken Corbett Sanders is Mountburning. Laura Jane Cohen is Springfield. Stella Bukarski is Sully District. Melanie K. Marin is Hunter Mill District. Elaine Tolan is Drainsville. Carl Frisch is Providence. Riccardi Anderson is Mason. And Tammy Darrenack-Kofax, who is vice chair, represents Franconia formerly the... And all those emails are valid. Let me see, I'm doing. We're doing five for twelve. Okay, by law, every July, the school board chooses a chairman and a vice chairman. They set the calendar of meetings for the year. And they assign themselves to committees. No one's a school board committee. It's a group of school board members that work on developing policy. So when I listed their duties to pass policy and then to help develop policy, that's where they develop policy. Those committee members' meetings are not generally televised. But you can go in person if you, you know, contact the clerk and ask where and when it is. Actually, they're on the school board calendar. After the committees, the work is taken to a work session of the whole board, and that is televised. And then it's taken for a vote. As I said, the chair is Ratsna, the vice chair is Chaney. The other leadership are Bev Medeja or Medeja, I've never had a chance to say her last name. Who's the clerk? Laura Cornell is the deputy clerk. And the division council, which means our head lawyer, is John Foster. And the other person they hire, of course, is Michelle Reed, our superintendent. Everybody else works for them. The clerks are very useful people, and I've worked with them for years, and they're the most honest and helpful and hardworking people I've met in the entire system. If anybody says this was arranged or something, I go back to their character and how hardworking they are and how reliable and fair they are. We'll have to get to know Dr. Reed as she continues to work for us. Okay, now, how do you get information on what they're doing? And the answers that you get, they're newsletters. I recommend that everybody get the newsletter for their district. And if you've got enough time and space, get the four at large. And then you can add up about 30 or 40 things to choose from, plus one from the each school. But let's see how to do it. We go here on this one. It takes us to the website. We type in an address. Robert Rigby Jr., 63. Let's hope it's not showing my bank bills. Takes you to this. Now, I can view all the subscription topics. I don't want to. I don't want the admins. We'll be going till about eight. Let's say I want the school board. I click here at school board. I forgot why it's not giving me all of the... Oh, okay, school board. I clicked school board, gives me all of them. Currently, it's selected all of them. If you don't want all of them, uncheck it. So that's how you do get news you choose. Play around with it. You'll see all sorts of options to get news that you choose. Let me stop the chair for a second. What we've encountered is my inability to understand technology. It's okay. Thanks for coming, Brendan.
Robert, if you want, I can always share from my screen too. I think Robert may have ejected himself from the meeting. Let me see. I don't see him here on my screen. All right, I'm gonna, I have the presentation as well. I'm gonna pull it up and jump in where he left off until he can come back in and join us. Okay, can you guys see my screen? If somebody could give me a thumbs up. Okay, sorry to do this scrolling, but see where we were at here. Okay, news you choose. We just finished. And so now we're gonna segue into school board meetings and hearings. So for this year, for 2022, 2023, meetings are the first and third Thursdays, except there's always an exception. The second meeting in November is on a Monday, and I'm sure that's due to holiday. Next year, starting in 2023, they will be the second and fourth Thursdays, with the exception right there. And we have these set up until July. And then you'll also get a copy of these slides, and you'll have all of the links. So the full calendar is here, and this is just a little example of what it looks like. So it's quite detailed. It shows you the type of meeting and shows you agenda items. Some agenda items are even set quite far out in advance. So say a review for something they know is always in January, and then, of course, other agenda items are added as we get closer to the meeting. And then types of school board meetings. Robert referred to this a little bit. He's mentioned a few of these. But there's six general types of meetings that we wanted everybody to understand. So the first here is a regular business meeting, and for each of these, we've indicated if there's an opportunity for public input, what type of input, whether there's a limited amount, so let's say 10 slots only. If the opportunity to provide input is spoken, or if you can also submit your input by video, so you would submit that file ahead of time. If the meeting or activity is open to the public or not, and then if it's recorded and available on demand, which would be, the on-demand would be the Falls Church Public Schools School Board YouTube channel. So you can see here, many of these have public input opportunities. Most of them are open to the public, except the school board committee meetings. I think there's five school board committees. So those, as Robert mentioned earlier, they're typically not open to the public. You can track it down and show up, but those are internal. They're not televised or recorded at that stage. Public hearings are several times a year. Those are designed, of course, to provide input. And then we have citizen advisory committees. Those are groups put together to solicit input from across the community. FCC PTA has a seat, a representative seat on several of these groups. Those meetings are open to the public, and they're often recorded. They were all recorded, of course, during COVID, and now, once that things are typically back in person, several of them are several of them are also still recorded and back on demand. Okay, so Robert is back. And if you just want to do work sessions and forums, Robert, and I can just keep screen sharing from here for now, if that works.
Okay, you're screen sharing? Okay.
Yes.
Let me okay, so if you're screen sharing, just go to the next slide. Okay, that's the part of the advisories you spoke about. That we that we have the, yeah, that's the part about the public hearings. Public hearings are different than regular school board meetings. The agenda is set either years in advance by state law or months in advance. Part of them are on budget, part of them are on capital improvement. One of them is on strategic plan, and I can't pull up what the other one is. Signing up for them is easier. There are more speakers. There generally aren't as much competition to speak on them as the general school board meetings. But they do ask that you address the topic of the evening. There's the clerk's phone number, and they will also post a Google Doc. I know there's a lot of information, folks. Any of it that you don't remember or want to help, shoot me an email. I'd be happy to answer. Next slide. Okay, there's the public hearing schedule. Okay, how do we advocate to the school board, which is, I think, what we're all here to hear about? broadly speaking, there are a limited number of recommended types of topics or situations in which to approach the school board and your school board member. Next slide. Oh, that's method. Topics would be policy changes. Change, for example, changes in the behavior manual, changes in the budget, like budget items you'd like to see, changes in courses that you'd like to see changed, changes in the names of parts of buildings and such that you'd like to be changed, changes in how they go about testing, cell phone policy. All of those things are the purview of the school board. The major ones being budget and building. In addition, they write letters to other government officials everywhere from the sports folks, the high school league, to the governor, to the president, to the Virginia School Board Association, whoever it's appropriate, is doing something that impacts us. They will write a letter from the board to those people representing Fairfax County. One more really important thing they do is they write a legislative priority. They have a list of things that they want our government in Richmond and Washington to do for us. They change it or update it each year, and I'll put up the dates on the calendar to when to begin making additions or changes to that list because you can change them as a citizen. But you've got to start early. You can't do it today. That's what I got, Jenna. Okay, now, have a lobby at the school board. By email is the first way. In personal meetings, I'm not sure if I end it's the construction I want to, but in a personal meeting. And by public address at a school board meeting. Public address at a school board meeting is the one that makes you feel most like you're doing something that the sexiest, the most public. It's the final step in many ways. Email is where to start. You can either email them directly using that portal on that page. The advantage of the portal is that it asks you if you live in the county. So when there's a big topic, they can just pay attention to the folks who live here and not the 10,000 people from California. When you're writing them, brevity is key. No one reads all the emails. They're much more likely to respond to an email, send to them personally with their name on it rather than emailing all 12 of them. If you want to email all 12, email all 12 individually. And then linking outside to articles is maybe helpful for information to administrators. The school board folks generally don't have time to read things. I would take primary sources like original research or original policies, screenshot bits of it, and include it in your email because that tells people exactly what you're talking about without having to dig through all of the wits. That's what I have to say on that. Yes, I'll remind people of that in their hand, and you can help me figure out the details on that because I'm actually not sure. Okay, in-person meetings, each of them has to have a certain number of office hours where you're available to meet with constituents and as folks each month. How do you find out where they are? For me, the easiest way is to subscribe to their their newsletters because they announce. Some of them do it in the library one person at a time. Some of them have Zoom Town Hall meetings. Some of them will have like a circle in a restaurant or something. If you're gonna bring a group or if you want to meet with them individually, send them an email. Let them know who you are and that you'd like to meet with them. That will go to their assistant, and their assistant may be able to work out a time with you. That's harder because they represent 110 to 1.2 million people. So when you're doing this, be clear, be brief, be patient, be graceful. I would avoid any email that starts with the word Y. Okay, speakers. Speakers have to be at the school board meeting, have to be stakeholders, which means you have to be a resident of the city or county of Fairfax. Doesn't mean owning property, means actually living here. Or you could be a current employee of FCPS, that's anyone with an FCPS email address, including substitutes. You have, or you can be a current student, including tuition students, students at TJ, things like that. Yes, you're right, Amanda. Bullet points are really good. You may be a parent or guardian of a current student, including non-custodial parents who live in, say, Washington. Or you can be a business partner. Or you can be a business partner that doesn't turn out to be anyone who does business at Fairfax. Means they're contractors, like a construction company, they're contractors. They don't have a way to check. They ask you to be honest. Next slide. Please don't speak if you're not allowed to. Uh, it 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 really devalues what you have to say. Okay, some advice on making school board testimony. Go on to the next. Testimony can bring attention to your advocacy priorities. This is when you go to a school board meeting first to announce to the world and to the board members, this is what I or my organization is concerned about. Do it more than once. Do it over a couple of months. Do it with several people, not eight people every meeting. And of course, do it, you know, for our, we want to change the world, uh, but not you haven't changed the world back. Second piece of advice is punctuate, emphasize, and show interest in more detailed information on complex issues. So speaking can punctuate, but the information has to get to them in print. Because in those two minutes, they say they listen, they do listen. It's really hard to understand everything said in that. And then the last thing that speaking can do is emphasize the importance to your community of a policy proposal proposal in the run-up and on the night of the vote. So if you've done one and two, and you've developed your policy, and you've got votes lined up, number three, you show up the nights of the vote to say, we're here, we value you, please students. Some things testimony can't do is you bring it up the night of the vote. You're really unlikely to get something changed from the day. They don't have the time to understand what you're talking about. Another thing testimony can do is provide detailed information and educate on complex topics. It's just too hard to understand in the two minutes. So you need one or two main points backdrop later. Okay. Speaking at the school board meeting, you do not have to address a topic on the agenda. You can speak on anything FCPS related. You may address the board once every three meetings. So for example, I spoke on the 30th of June. There was a meeting in July. There's a meeting Thursday. I will not be able to speak until September 15th. So if you speak, you skip two minutes. You should give your true name and address to the clerk. The state law requires that, but they will not publish, uh, your address. Uh, they will publish your name. Um, you no longer have to get up at 6:00 AM and type really quickly to get a spot. It's a lottery. There's a four-day business window. So when the meeting is on Thursday, the lottery opens on Monday and closes on Tuesday at 7:00 PM. What that means is for the meeting on Thursday, this Thursday, you'll have until tomorrow night at 7:00 to enter the lottery. Next slide. Go ahead. Oh, oh, I see, it is next slide. Okay, the three sponsors are for students. Uh, uh, they say they're a student, they're entered into that lottery. Uh, if there aren't three students speaking, those are left empty. There are 10-point spots left for others for real-time, given-in-the-moment testimony. If there are more than three kids, the kids that we put into that pool, then there are three spots for pre-recorded videos that you turn in a few days in advance. The students is a separate lottery, the videos is a separate lottery lottery from the 10 main ones. If there are more than those 10 people, they make a waiting list. Um, uh, I tell you, um, the, uh, the real-time lottery is the most competitive. The student and the video are the least competitive. They take more trouble, but if you're able to do them, they're your best spot. You cannot exchange your spot anymore. You can't share a spot anymore. You can't give your spot away. And you cannot change from in-person to virtual. So for example, you get the coronavirus on Wednesday. Uh, unfortunately, you just will lose your spot. They won't change you to virtual if you weren't virtual all right. Go ahead, Jen. Okay, how to sign up? I've got a bunch of screenshots here. Here we go. Okay, go to fcbs.edu. Click on school board at the top. You see it right there, the top line. Then you have to scroll down to speak at a school board member and double-click there, and you'll see where it takes you on the next slide. I don't know what I did. Oh, I see, okay. Do we not have the screenshots next?
Yeah, I think they're coming up after.
Okay. Okay, uh, so you register, uh, here are the dates for registration in 2022. There are the dates for registration in 2023. They're all Fridays through Tuesdays, except for that one weird day before Thanksgiving. Okey dokey. You have to register before 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM on Tuesday. Okay, here's the screenshots. This was done by me. It it will not put my email address there. They want your email. You have to give an email where they can read you. They want your first and last name. Um, they're they're not incredibly fussy about this, but you should give your own. They want to know if you're a current FCPS student. Yes or no, not a parent of a student, but a student. If you click yes, they'll want to know what school you go to. Um, and then you decide, here's the most important one. You decide whether you're going to be in-person, virtual, or you're going to pre-record a video. Once submitted, that cannot be changed, they won't do it. Uh, they want a link to your video testimony. If you don't have it ready yet, you have to have it within then Wednesday morning. So you can delay that. I I myself always have one ready, uh, but it's, you know, it depends on how you work. Uh, then they want to know the name of the group you're representing. You can represent a group if you have your, you know, board's permission. If you don't, just put individual, that's fine. Most people do that. Uh, they want your street address. Uh, this is required by law. Um, they won't publish it. The reason for the phone number is so that if there's something wrong with your registration, they can call you and correct it. They really are very helpful. List of the topic. Your topic can be anything. There's no longer a dropdown. Um, you may put whatever you want. The one thing you can't do is leave it blank. Now, you can get translation services. Just let them know the language you want. Then they'll ask for your magisterial district. This can be where you live. It can be where your kids go to school. Oh, whatever magisterial district you're most connected. And down here at the bottom is submit, and it says, don't forget to click submit. Let me pause for a second for questions on this. No? Okay. I guess our next slide, Jen. Okay, making a video. Let's see how you make a video. Okay. Once they announce that you're ready, that you won the video lottery, at 7:00 on Tuesday, you have until 7:00 the next morning to turn it in, you have 12 hours. For myself, I plan ahead, but you don't have to do it. Um, I plan ahead because I've done it like 80 times. Um, they do not want a professional snazzy video. They really don't. They want you on your phone or your computer, recording yourself talking. You can turn your screen off while you do that and all that. They don't want an MP4. They want a link, uh, you you can link to. I use YouTube. There are other ones that people use. If you want help getting a YouTube account, send me an email and I'll lock you through. Okey dokey, what's next? Okay. Yeah, so here's how to record the video. On your phone, you use the camera function, turn it around to face you. Press the red dot, record, press the red dot to end. When I make them, I record over and over again. They really have to be under two minutes. If it's over two minutes, they will either cut you off um, or call you to help you cut it off, or three, just disqualified. Uh, I've seen all three happen. On a computer, you do the same thing. You can use the camera function on your computer. You can use Zoom. Uh, and then my recommendation is to upload to YouTube. Let's go on to the next slide. Okay, yeah, what what my my statement on YouTube uh, is if that's what you use, like, go over that, just send me an email and I'll go over it briefly. Tips on writing and giving your comments, okay? With only two minutes, don't spend a lot of time on fanciness, introductions, welcomes, and all of that. Give your title, give your name and who you represent, or good evening, glad to be here. Always put your main points first. Time after time, I see people build what crescendo, and then the mic cuts. Remember when you're testifying that board members are people. So if you're mean to people, they won't listen to you. Uh, and the audience are people, which includes little kids that people bring with them, because it's their only option for childcare. My advice is always use primary sources. Don't get your material from the internet or newspaper articles. Dig and dig and dig into the policy and regulations or the legal brief or whatever, so that you're quoting primary sources rather than a news source. One thing to remember that a wise person said to me is that the people whom the school board most needs to hear from don't sign up to speak to or email the school board. So if you've got the privilege and the ability and the safety to speak to the school board, see if maybe some of the folks who don't would like you to speak for them. You can certainly do that. We have to think about our own sense of safety, of course. Um, I would always send them your testimony in advance. I wouldn't wait and surprise them with it. Because again, in that two minutes, they won't get it all. But if they get it on Tuesday, they can be. Okay, on to the next. Again, you have two minutes. Two minutes goes by fast. Practice, time yourself, leave yourself 10 or 15 seconds. And before the buzzer goes off, uh, so you look like you planned it, uh, not more surprised and rambling. Um, your time begins when you begin to speak, not when you walk to the podium. So you can fiddle with your papers and take your glasses off and clear your throat or whatever, because they don't time you till you start. Uh, and you don't have to be great order. Like I say, I've done this 180, 200 times. I type my speech, I hold it and I read it, and then I look up at them and smile at the end, because I really stink as a public speaker. Vanessa has a point that we'll work at in a sec. Next one. In terms of content, if you're representing the PTA, you need to stick with the positions and resolutions of the very PTA ladder, ladder. Our president is our official spokesperson, so you need to talk to them before you speak. For FCBS as a public employee, you really have very extensive speech rights. Don't talk about children. Don't talk about your boss. Don't reveal any, uh, information. And if you talk about things like harassment that you witnessed, they will want to know when and where it happened, uh, because you're a witness. But you can really say what you want. Um, our lawyers believe strongly in free speech. They really do let people say what they want. So if you're going to bring small children, keep in mind, they may hear some things you do not want to hear. For myself, I always run my speech past multiple people and post it on social media uh, in the event. The advice I always get is use shorter and less complex sentences. Don't put as many Latin words in them. Amanda says, well, wait just a sec. Okay. I tell you, um, read this about how to find board agendas and policy and regs. And we'll do a school board 202 on how to find school board agendas, policies, and regs. I'll just go over it real quickly. Go to fcbs.edu, to school boards. Go down to meetings and agendas, click board doc, and this will pop up. This will pop up. You can search the meetings and the agendas. Up there on the right is a little button that says policy. You can press that, go back to the left and search for all the policies. If you press meetings and go back to the left, you can search all of the video testimony back to 2011. Library is full of good stuff. Uh, spend some time with it. And that work calendar is updated every week to tell you what the board is doing. Okay, let's see what we've done. That's it. Thanks. Uh, thanks for coming. We have a few minutes for questions. Are we putting questions in the chat?
Yes, please, um, go ahead and put your questions in the chat now. Uh, we just have the one question so far from Amanda, and then we'll give folks a second to put any other um, questions. Um, and do you still want me to read the questions, Robert, or do you want to go ahead and read them yourself?
You read.
Um, so who in FCC PTA would we speak with to get the backing of the PTA on a subject to advocate for?
The answer is Larry Mills, our president. He's our spokesperson, uh, and if any of us are going to speak, uh, we will be his designate. Uh, if you want to interact with some folks in advance about that, you can contact me or Jenna. Uh, but ultimately, you need Larry's.
Great, um, and I think, yeah, also go, so Larry put in his email address. Um, you can also, like, uh, Robert said, go to him um, as you're working through what you might want to talk about before you you finalize your comments to submit to Larry. A question, will the slides be made available? Yes, we will send those out in a email. Uh, maybe not tomorrow, maybe the following day. Another question, uh, what do you think about the idea of adding a voting member from the city of Fairfax?
Okay, this question Mary Ann is asking is that the city of Fairfax sends its students to Fairfax County Public Schools, Fairfax County Schools? Uh, and, um, for all intents and purposes, they're SCPS students, but the city of Fairfax cannot vote for our school board. They have their own school, which negotiates with and Mary Ann is asking, should we have a 13th member who votes, uh, who's elected by the city of Fairfax and who votes for us? I myself don't have an opinion on that yet, uh, and I don't think the PTA does either. Uh, but it's certainly something worth, uh, all of us looking at. And noon I can talk about it later, so. Uh but it's certainly something worth uh all of us looking at. And you and I can talk about it later, so.
She added that they have no vote for school board.
Right, right. You do for your city school board, but not the county school board, correct?
Yes, yeah, she she agrees. And um just in case people aren't seeing the chat, um Larry, our F C C president uh just wanted to communicate, the goal is never to stifle your voice, but ensure your position is in line with state and national positions and agenda. Uh that's if you're speaking as a P T A representative. Of course, you are always encouraged to speak as an individual. If you're introducing yourself um as a P T A leader, then that's when um we would want to, you'd want to connect with Larry. Um and many, he says many, but just know that many people will see you as a P P P T A representative, um even if you are speaking as an individual. So just keep in mind, um you know, your community likely knows if you're a local unit president um that that is um your role, even if you're speaking as an individual. So just be mindful of your uh content. And then Amanda commented um earlier, let me scroll back up. Uh when thinking about people and populations who do not have a voice, also consider staff. Many have a fear of retribution if they speak to the school board. If your P T A is approving to speak on an issue, how can staff be included in a way they are not afraid? So I think that was sort of a statement for people to think about, but then also Rob, Robert, if you have any um additional comments to Amanda's point.
Know it's, know it's truth uh and staff who are uh you know doubly uh from marginalized groups are 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 just just physically much less safe speaking to our school board. Uh and those of us who are more safe really do have a responsibility to ask folks who can't speak what to say. I agree.
Um so if people have um things that they would like to know in additional sessions, um you can put those in the chat. Uh you can also email um Robert here, as he said, um we'd like to expand on this and do more of a two oh one, but we wanted to definitely start with the basics. Um so as I said, if there's other things you'd like to know about, um please put those in um. And then um Larry has to sign off, our S C C P T A president. Um he is thanking everyone for for coming um and wants everyone to know our proverbial F C C P T A doors are always open. And then we have another uh question coming in. How do groups organize and govern the P T As at the high school, middle school and elementary levels? Also, do you separate those groups that identify as parent teacher associations? Uh I can answer that if you'd like, Robert, from the. I think he's asking, um excuse me, how the different uh local unit levels, when we say local unit, we we mean a school P T A. So your local unit name is the same as your school name. Uh we don't group them together by grade level or by uh by school. So they're not differentiated by elementary school, middle school or high school. They are differentiated within P T A as an association and as a nonprofit more geographically. So we have councils. Um in this case, Fairfax County is our council. In other parts of Virginia or the state, um a council may comprise of a different geographic entity. But we are county equals council. Then from there, uh we have Virginia P T A, which is our next level of the association. And then we go to national P T A. A P T S A, so parent teacher student association is the same um for all intents and purposes as a P T A. There's no separate category in terms of how they're governed or how they're organized. Uh there's a no, no practical difference between the P T A and a P T S A um in terms of um organization or management or oversight or any of those sorts of things. It's just simply that level of engaging students. Um so hopefully that um answers your question. Um Ra- uh William, if not, please feel free to follow up. But the county, the council, F C C P T A, we have about a hundred and seventy active P T As in Fairfax County. So F C C P T A works with all one hundred and seventy of those. Uh when we attempt to break them down into smaller groups, we do that um typically by pyramid. So we have an ambassador program where we try to work pyramid by pyramid. But other than that, we are working with the entire county. Uh we have a large board of um about twenty five to thirty board members. Um so to to try to address that huge volume of P T As here in Fairfax County. Tremendous um work. We're always looking for um board members. You can find that um on our website as well. Uh another question, how do you as the F C C P T A choose which topics to advocate for on behalf of the whole P T A? It's a wonderful, wonderful question. Um Robert, I'll let you answer that or I can chime in as well.
Okay, I mean, we gathered together as a group of executive board members uh brought in input, you know, asked people we knew um in our communities and also looked at the advocacy representations from our parent organization, uh the Virginia P T A and the National P T A. And a major focus of both of those organizations over the past years has been the mental health of students and staff. So when in our discussion, uh we saw that, we we looked at our own community and said this makes a great deal of sense. So we said as our major priority for F C C P T A to be improving mental health of students and staff. Deeper in, we have a specific ask of the S C S P, which is that they increase, increase the number of clinical staff in our schools. Um social workers, psychologists, um nurses, um and uh um because as as the Virginia P J says, our numbers are better than they were, but they're less than the national standards by an order of magnitude. So that's how we said that. And that's what our major focus is. Mental health with a specific focus on budget, getting more staff. What are your thoughts, Jenna?
Uh yeah, that's absolutely correct. I would also say that we're always looking for um input from our members. So that can come up to your local unit uh president. And then from your president to the F C C P T A board, it can come directly from members. We do have uh not only Robert as our advocacy VP, we have our representatives on the school board advisory groups. So um student health advisory committee or um family life education advisory committee, those are also input channels from members. And then there was a follow up um question, or let me step back. We also have our communication channels, our newsletters, our social media, um our events. We have quarterly membership meetings um that are quite well attended and we typically have presentations, discussions, uh Q and A. Those are also input opportunities from the community. And then there was a follow up question um regarding uh the the person who wrote the question said they've seen higher P T A boards advocate for things that they had not voted for. So how that works is Virginia P T A has an annual meeting. Um we typically um try to send, of course, as many people as possible from Fairfax County to represent represent all of our members here in Fairfax County. We are then um accredited, a certain member, a certain number of us are able to vote. There are presentations on position statements and resolutions at Virginia P T A. We go through the entire process and all the Roberts rules and orders, the Robert rules of order, the debate, and then we uh we vote. Similarly, at national P T A, uh there are delegates who are able to go um to national P T A. Uh position statements are submitted from the body. Uh those come up from local units or individual members or state members. Um in the same process, we we vote on them. So they are, um there are individual members who are voting. Um and for people who are interested in participating in that way, you would just want to start off um by getting some sort of leadership position and attending one of those events, either the state conference or the national conference.
I will also say, Robert, that the deadline for submitting national resolutions is early October. Um so now's the time to get something in, talk in your own P T A about it and have your president uh pass it up the chain uh or contact one of us on the board. Uh and uh yeah, I'm drinking a board to look at and stuff a little bit, do all of that. And also, Robert, you have the same name as one of my best friends uh in middle school back in the mid seventies. So there we have it. Uh what's next, Jenna?
Um so those are all of our questions for now, uh which is perfect timing because it's it's just about um eight o'clock. We can stay on for another few seconds, but we're going to go ahead and um stop the screen share, stop the recording. Uh you have Robert's email. Um encourage you to reach out to him that way. You can also uh reach out to us on social media at any time uh or via our website. You can find all of your school board advisory group members, other officers, program committee chairs, um anything you need to know. Um as Larry mentioned, his email is very simple, president at F C C P T A dot org. So we um thank you all so much for coming. We thank Robert for putting this um together. This is the first time um to my knowledge, or at least in quite some time, we've been able to do a program like this. It's so important that people in the community know this information and hopefully feel more comfortable advocating to our school board as things gear up for the year. Um and we hope that you'll keep an eye out for future sessions and attend futures, future sessions as well. So thank you and good night.